All right, let's start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Chief?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much, and we will begin with some presentations. We'll start with Surrey Services for seniors.
Can I put a bob in?
You certainly can, hold on. USBs on the left here.
That's blowing you, so I can just hand out. Thank you.
Good evening. A little over a year or so ago, I came before you and introduced Surrey Services. And we're so very thankful for the support we've gotten from the township and want to kind of bring you up to date on where we are after a year, kind of give you a report on the return in your investment of $10,000. Just a little reminder, my name is Barbara Fentress, and I run Surrey Services for seniors. We have four locations throughout Chester and Delaware County. We also have in-home care and transportation. Tonight, I'm going to focus on just what we do in Havreford Township. Our mission is to help older adults remain living in their home with independence and dignity, and to continue as active members of the community. And again, we thank you very much for helping us complete that mission in this township. We do it in three ways. We're at the center over on Arlington Road. We're in many homes in the township, and we do work with a lot of community partners. To complete the mission, we think that keeping adults healthy, both altogether socially, physically, and emotionally, helps them stay living in the community of their choice. To give you an idea, at the center on Arlington Road, in fiscal year 14, 1,090 seniors were served. You'll see just some fun photos as we go along. We have a large art group that is run by a volunteer that actually comes from Paoli. It's a very strong group. They did a display or exhibit out at Vanguard Corporate Center in Malvern last year. We also do a lot of lifelong learning. One of our partners is a school night, as well as the library. We do a lot with those two partners. And we also do a lot of programming and education around nutrition, chronic disease, self-management, which is critical when you realize that 90% of older adults 65 and over have at least one chronic disease, and when you hit 85, it is two. We also partner with ARP to get taxes done for low-income seniors, and those are done for free. We work with a number of the schools in the area, and intergenerational programs, combining many generations, actually. And volunteers are a key part of what goes on in Havreford Township through Surrey. Just to give you some numbers, last year, over 18,500 hours were donated by volunteers in this community for a value of over $418,000 using the federal rate for volunteer hours. We could not do what we do without the volunteer support from Havreford, and we're very, very thankful. One of the things that volunteers do is they deliver meals. So over 17,600 meals were delivered to 62 homebound, low-income seniors in Havreford Township in one year. Very critical. It not only brings a meal every single day to the home, but it also engages that resident with somebody answering, you know, somebody coming to visit them, making sure they're okay, that they answer, they do have to answer the door, so we know that they're okay and they're in good shape. And days like today, when weather isn't so cooperative, we do make sure that they get their meals. We either plan ahead and get them food ahead of time, or people are terrific and still get them what they need. Out of the Havertown Center is a program called Shore Connection. That is from the Older Americans Act. It is a volunteer-based program, providing assistance to those in need in their homes. So we do work with a number of your police officers, where they are aware of people that have needs in the home, everything from that they're setting off alarms unnecessarily, or they've had scam situations, or things like that. A lot of what they do is maybe helping hoarders, and just kind of throw a couple township photos up there for you. Or transportation is a big program out of Chure, so we get volunteer drivers to take people to the grocery store, the doctor's office, or other places that they need to get to. And we do a lot of physical work through Chure. So yard cleanup, working with mostly college-age students in that program in the summertime, and then a huge home modification program where we go in, this is a ceiling that is breaking down here, and we actually do home repair to make their homes safe for them to stay living in. We also have in-home services around personal companions, home care, home cleaning, daily money management. Again, today, I was working with one of your police officers around a gentleman who was scammed in the bank in the community, and trying to get somebody to help him figure out his banking situation and how people got access to his account. And then geriatric care management helps families and the older adult navigate the very complex aging services. So that is all work that is done outside in your community, really outside the center totally. It has nothing to do with the center you're familiar with on Arlington. People we touched in Havertown, 1,360 seniors received a little over 2,100 services, and these services are around visitors, information or referral, people just needing help, needing information, where do they go for this or that, or anything else, or if they are alone and they want a friendly caller every day or every week, whatever is their option, they also can have that. This is a list, and I would probably say it's not totally everybody, but these are all the people we work with in your community. One of the local hospitals asked for blankets, so you can see this is a group of ladies who were making blankets for them. And then one of the great projects that just happened really recently, in the last, like, three months, is Whole Foods asked if we wanted to partner with them, so during the holidays, they collected some funds, and we put together bags for homebound folks, bags of food, and then they also gave us 260 cases of food that we could deliver. And this is one of our, the man in the red sweatshirt is one of our volunteers, and the other gentleman is a Whole Foods employee loading the back of a truck. If you go to the site on Arlington, I think you'll still see some of those boxes, but we have distributed quite a bit of that food out into the community to people who need it. And I just want to go back to that. One other great thing, actually, on Martin Luther King Day, the middle school, the Havreford Middle School, rented two small buses, and a group of the students went and distributed the food bags, which was a fabulous partnering event for a lot of people. And then Valley Forge Military Academy came over on a weekend and took the rest of the mass amount of the food and moved it around and distributed it for us. So they came into the community to do that. We did partner with the Havreford YMCA, a fabulous healthy living fair, was really well-attended, and we look forward to doing that again, hopefully. And then on May 9th, we're going to have a spring event at the Reserve, just introducing more people in the community to what we are about at Surrey. So to summarize, just to give you an idea of all these numbers I've thrown out, in total, we've served 1,672 of Havreford Township seniors, and we've done it through the center and home services, geriatric care management. We have vans that do transportation in addition to the volunteers, and we've delivered a lot of meals to people who need the food. And that is my report, and I'm just so thrilled to be in partnership with you.
Thank you very much.
Barbara, thank you very much. I'd ask, I meet with Barbara on a regular basis, and I thought it was important that she come, because myself and my staff get the opportunity to see all the great things that obviously what you just saw, and it is a phenomenal service, and we're lucky to have you, and we'll certainly strive to be able to help you more financially in the upcoming years.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it, and anything, if you know of anybody we can help, please just let us know, call, myself or anybody.
All right. Thank you. All right. Take a minute here.
Let me do, I hope I can come back another year and tell you some more good stuff. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Oakmont Fire Company.
I'd love to go. Thanks.
I don't position, sorry.
But if you do.
My name's Bill Easton. I reside at 329 Mill Road. I happen to be the treasurer for Oakmont Fire Company, and tonight, we're going to make a two-part presentation. The first part is relative to the existing obligation that the fire company owes the township. Obviously, we're very grateful for the 2009 or 2008 loan of $2 million to build our new firehouse then. And currently, we owe a little over $1,078 on that. And in March of 2010, Oakmont made a $400,000 prepayment. At the time, we were told by the township that the prepayment would not result in a reduction of our annual debt service due to the fact that we obtained the loan under resolution, and it would have to stay at this level. But with our current financial situation and us doing projections on how the fire company's is running and our shrinking sort of contribution base, we felt it was incumbent upon us to let our partners, you, the township, know that we would possibly request a reduction in our annual debt service. It would still stay within the original parameters of our original loan, but we would like a $40,000 reduction in that annual debt service. And I've attached an amortization schedule that kind of quantifies that. Now, the first impact to the township as a result of this, because we know that you guys have to painfully go through an annual budget every year, the first dollar reduction that would be evident in our request wouldn't materialize until December of 2016, because we understood that you guys just passed a budget going forward, and we understood that we had to allow you time to digest that and everything. So it's a real simple request, and if anybody has any sort of questions at all, it would forecast our total repayment to be done in December of 2025, which is actually three years earlier than the original note that was cast to be repaid in 2028. So if there's any sort of questions at all, I know we shared this request with members of the commissioners in the past and everything, but we want to really formalize this and see if we can get some more traction of a decision made on this in the future. Is there any questions at all regarding the request at all?
Nope. Nope.
Okay, and I'll turn it over to Chief Hattan.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hattan. I reside at 2310 Oakmont Avenue in Havertown. I'm chief of the Oakmont Fire Company. I'm here to talk about apparatus replacement. Before I do that, in case you guys don't know, I just want to make sure you know who's with us. We have President John Stretch over there, retired chief Bill Hattan, Sr., obviously Bill Easton just spoke, Bill McGuire, deputy chief, and buzzy Jim McGoldrick, he's the board of directors. Basically, what I'm here to do tonight is, we've reached out to some of the commissioners over the last nine months, some of you know that, about the apparatus replacement, which is basically fire truck replacement. We have two trucks that are due for replacement. I know, we're talking to Larry back and forth, he put $2 million in the 2017 capital budget. So that's basically what I'm here for, because is asking you guys to support this and fund it, so we can move forward. Because, as you know, you just don't go and order, you know, you don't go over to the Chevy dealer and order and pick out a Chevy. This takes time. It takes months of work, and that's what we're asking to do, so we can move forward. We, you know, we can't just, we have to have a commitment that this is what we're going to do. In that $2 million, I'm not here to speak for them, you have two trucks from Oakmont, and then there's one truck from Mano, I know that's in there. That's how the Bureau of Fire came up with the replacement. There's been all different replacements kicked around, you know, 20 years for a truck, 20, whatever, but the end result was that it came up with 20 and 20, and that's where we're at. So I know we've talked to several, like I just said, and it's, I think it's, you know, imperative that we, that you guys, you know, that you fund that $2 million. That's my...
Okay, is that all? Are you asking that that be put on the agenda next week? Is that what you're asking, Bill?
No.
No?
No, no. He actually want...
No, they want to know about 2017.
About 2017 budget.
And if they get a yes, they can go ahead and start ordering, because like you say, it's not just a matter of, you know, picking up the phone and saying, this is what we want.
I'm sorry, it is, it is in our capital budget for 2017. Am I correct, Larry?
Yeah, we, we actually have, as everyone is aware, we always do a forecast.
Right.
And obviously, the funding, we obviously still have to come up with the funding, but it's in the forecast that we would spend approximately $2 million on fire apparatus. As Bill, as Chief Hattan had said, we, their ladder truck is, has exceeded the years, correct? I believe it's 20...
21.
21 years. And as I spoke to the chief, as well as other members of the Bureau of Fire, we've asked, those chiefs are all aware of all the other capital needs the township is and required to have as far as operating the township, repairing the roads, so on and so forth. So yes, we're forecasting in 2017 that we will need to replace the apparatus, but a lot can happen from now until 2017. So I don't know, maybe this is something you can help me out with, Jimmy. I mean, I don't know if this board can, can make a commitment now that they're going to spend that money in 2017, but it's certainly in our forecast to do that. I've made a commitment, that's if I'm here, I've made a commitment to the, to all the chiefs of the fire companies, that that is something that we're, we're moving towards.
Well, in all probability, Larry, you'll be here, so basically, is what you're saying is, oh, you do have the money set aside, right, but you don't know what's going to come along around. I understand that.
Yeah, we, obviously, we're going to continue to do more, we're going to do more borrowing. And, and that forecast, we always do it several years ahead of time, so we know that we're going to be doing roads. For example, you know, we don't, we're not doing a road program in 2015. I'll do a road program that would consist of approximately a million dollars' worth of improvements in 2016, therefore, in 2017, we would have, we would look at the capital needs to start replacing the fire apparatus. So in all likelihood, I don't see it not occurring. It's on my forecast to move forward as we do more borrowing, to borrow the money to do that.
Just to answer your question, I mean, I think the planning is appropriate, but I don't think we can make any commitments at this point, because, although, I hope you're still here, I don't know that the rest of us will all still be here.
That's right, we might not be.
We can't commit for, we can't commit at this point.
Yeah, you can't commit another board to, to the money.
But what, just out of, Bill, what words do you take in from Oakmont? I know you're the largest company in the township.
So we have the seventh, the third, the sixth, the fourth, and the fifth. So there's five.
Five words, okay.
Yeah. And if I can add something to, not only to Chief Hattan, but I think it's relating to all the fire companies in the community. I mean, our members of the board, this board serve on boards, as well as members of the fire companies, and it's, they do a phenomenal job for the community, have it along, for a long time. But I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, I believe that probably only 20% of the residents in the community contribute to our fire companies on the annual dues. And I know that we're, we're doing some things at the Bureau of Fire level to try to do more recruitment and retention, to keep our, our members of the fire service interested and serving as they done and will continue to do, but we'll continue to work with them to help improve the, some of the contributions, because their needs are not going to go away as well. So I just want to, I think that's something that we could, need to continue to get out there, and we'll work with Lori and other members of my staff to get the word out to our residents when we do our community newsletters.
Okay, so to answer your question, yes, 2017, you are, it's on, it's in our, in our capital budget, and we plan to do that. We plan to fund, fund it. We can't obviously vote on it because...
I understand, right.
Well, we're not voting on that, but what about what Mr. Eaton had talked about with the finances?
That would be for next year's budget, and we're well there. I've spoke to Amy about that, and that certainly, that would be put into next year's budget and...
And then we can vote on it.
Yeah, you can vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that was done, though.
I'll have the budget, and you, and this board will make that decision. Oakmont has come to us on several occasions. They came to me, and this year, I said no, because the budget was already prepared, and we would actually have a deficit, so I thought it was important for them to come and make this presentation to the entire board, and this board can consider that, yes, it would be $40,000 less.
Revenue.
We will need to get approval from our bond counsel, since we had, underlying those debts was tax-exempt financing, so we just have to make sure it doesn't run afoul of the reissuance rules.
And Commissioner Holmes, so this would be forgiveness of $360,000?
No. No. No, it's not forgiveness.
Okay. It's restructuring of the payment?
He's okay with that.
No, because I'm thinking that's what you're asking, and I wasn't...
You're their favorite commissioner.
I'll go take it.
No, they're just looking to...
This is restructuring?
Yeah, this is, this is...
Okay, so you're re-amortizing it, that's all? You're not, you're not...
Yeah, and by the end of the day, what we may just end up doing is reallocating the $400,000 payment that got made. I mean, we just have to make sure with bond counsel that there isn't an amendment to the underlying loan that in any way affects the structure of the original loan in such a way that it creates what's called under the tax law, a reissuance. And a reissuance is something we don't want, because it's a pain in the rear end, so...
For lack of a better description.
I have a much better description.
But it's, good, great, thank you. I appreciate that.
So who's going to contact, Larry, you're going to contact the bond counsel and find out?
Why, it's Jim's partner.
Larry Gentile.
Yeah, at Mr. Matt Losky.
Yeah, we'll speak to Mr. Matt Losky about it.
Okay, and that'll be, we'll start working when it come August, when we start working on our, our budget process.
Yeah, and it's worth noting, if it wasn't clear to Mrs. Hall, then we should state that very explicitly, or what is being, we're not talking about forgiveness of the loan or a reduction, even a reduction of the interest that's paid, but just a question of extending the amount of principal payments back to a date that doesn't exceed the original date we expected to have been paid off in the first place.
Okay.
And indeed, it will actually increase the amount of interest that ultimately gets paid back to the township for this loan, as it takes them longer to pay back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And now it's Chief, Police Department, Crime Stats.
Reporting on the major crimes for the month of February 2015, we did have one burglary of an unoccupied residence on Glendale Road, and we had one burglary of a commercial business, Brimar Beef and Ale. We had one robbery at Grassland Park, we arrested two juveniles. Officers wrote 288 tickets, moving citations, they wrote 245 parking tickets, and issued 232 warnings last month.
Nice work. That's it. Thank you, Chief. And now, Paramedic Department?
Yeah. Mr. President, I had asked Mr. McCanns to come this evening and present a very brief and quick overview, a status report. As you know, that we extended or amended our agreement in November with...
At the Hospital University of Pennsylvania, so...
Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jim McCanns. I'm the director of Paramedics in Havreford Township, and thanks for coming out on this very icy night, just like the 50th in a row, I think, but on a very serious note, I'd like you to take a moment, your thoughts and your prayers, remember paramedic Janet Livingston, who was killed this morning in the line of duty in Cambria County, Pennsylvania. She was taking care of some people in accident scene when a large truck slid on ice and killed her. So, you know, it's something we'd just like to keep in mind as we go through these numbers, these are real people and real events, of course, that we're talking about. That's my obligatory picture of what is now our fleet. It is, it's the same people, excellent care, but we have advanced our relationship with the University of Pennsylvania, and now those are the vehicles that you see around town with another symbol on it. You have an idea, just call volumes, pre and post-contract, you'll see that there is a large difference from the pre side to the post side. I need to remind you that the pre side is the paramedic responses, and now the, so advanced life support responses are on the left in the 11th of 13 to February 14 model. At that time, the paramedic department here in the township did not do basic life support transports or respond on basic life support calls. On the right-hand side, we do now. So it gives you an idea of the, the current volumes that we're dealing with, and it gives you the general numbers. It's actually kind of a large fluctuation, but indeed, that does happen, weather, flu, different factors such as that. In the springtime, we'll see other kinds of injuries as fields, and people start getting out and playing in warm summer nights and that sort of thing. We'll see a different spike in numbers. I'd like to point out the, what is nationally called an out-of-shoot time, meaning from the time the call is dispatched until the vehicle's on its way, that the out-of-shoot time was, in the past model, still that same period, we're looking at the four months from late '13 to early '14, and now late '14 to early '15, the out-of-shoot time then was 96% less than two minutes. We're currently in 98% less than 90 seconds, and the national benchmark is 90 seconds. Hospital destinations, this was a point of worry for a number of people, that there would be some level of coercion or guiding our patients to go to a facility that would not have been their primary choice. I'd like you to take a look and see that that is by the numbers, not, not at all what happened, never was the intention either of ourselves or the University of Pennsylvania partners to have any of that happen. If you look on the left-hand side, the columns represent vehicle 1087 and 1087A, so it'll be, both vehicles are represented in a common column, but in different colors. And if you kind of go along and just take a look, you'll see that through that period of time from last year versus now, it's almost exactly the same. We really have very little difference. There's a couple outliers. There's a Will's High Hospital running there that, that we only get one of those every once in a while, where you have somebody with... once in a while, where you have somebody with an isolated eye injury, and that's the best choice to take them there. But otherwise, though, I think it's very obvious that we continue taking patients to their proper facility, usually their choice of facility, but it needs to be very clear, though, to people that there are guidelines where perhaps somebody will be having a medical event that it's not suitable for the hospital that they'd want to go to. So, and for instance, if somebody was to have an active heart attack, and we are to find that in the field and find strong evidence of it, it would be inappropriate to, to take them to a facility that didn't have any intervention for that. So, at that time, it's usually just a matter of discussion with the person, they understand, and if somebody becomes adamant, or if there's a, any further issue, there's a way to deal with that, and we usually contact the receiving hospital and have the ER physician speak directly to the patient. And that's, that's usually all it takes. It's very rare, and it's, and people understand usually fully that there's, that it is in their best interest. Some hallmarks that have happened over this, over the last few months, I'd like to point out some things that we're doing here and some challenges that we're up against, and I'll just kind of breeze over them quickly. IO needles, there's a, while this intervention's been around for a very long time, it's basically, we use a needle that goes directly into the bone. I know it sounds horrible, but it accesses the patient's vascular system by going directly into the bone marrow. That is now our primary access whenever we have somebody in cardiac arrest, and we're finding nationally that we're getting medicines into somebody almost 60 seconds more quickly than we were in the past. That's a national number, but that's something Dr. Dickinson, our medical director, stepped up, saw evidence of it, and we instituted very quickly into the field. It's something we've been doing since November. Blood thinners, we are, if you watch any television show or the Super Bowl or whatever, there's always an ad for somebody who's on a blood thinner, or, you know, somebody who has a, a condition called AF or HR fibrillation. Well, we have an older population here in Haverford Town, and we see an awful lot of people on blood thinners. And blood thinners are a great lifesaver. They do prevent strokes associated with that dysrhythmia. But they also have another side to them, and that is that if that person suffers any kind of trauma, it puts them at a tremendous risk for a fatal hemorrhage. And that is one of the indications that we use for taking somebody to a trauma center. They may have only stumbled, they may have a minor trauma, particularly to the head, but it's worrisome to a great degree if they're on a blood thinner. And it's something that we take into effect and we're aware of. Left ventricular cyst devices, there are people in our community, we're aware of them, we contact, we are contacted by either Temple, Jefferson, Penn, or, or Einstein, whoever might be placing this left ventricular device. Basically, it's something of an artificial heart, if you will, that is inserted inside the person's body, it's completely encapsulated, and it rinses blood through their body. It's very different than anything before. Because of that rinsing mechanism, there's no pulse. So, it takes a bit of training. We had, we're trained on these devices, and we've worked very closely. If somebody has that in our community, we are contacted, and we touch base with them and their family, and we make sure that we are familiar with the particular device that they have. Naloxone, also known as Narcan, Haverford Township was one of the spearhead departments when it came to pushing for the naloxone law. The naloxone law allows police officers to give intranasal or spray Narcan directly up the nose of somebody who is suspected to be an opioid overdose. So, anything in the heroin, morphine, or fentanyl-type family, or any of the oxys, if they are unconscious due to that, or otherwise disabled due to that, police officers who are on location immediately can squirt it up the person's nose and reverse that. It's almost an antidote. It's one of the only drugs known that has that specific job and has no side effects unless you're under the influence of an opioid. It's been, been covered to a huge degree in the papers recently with the DA's office. DA Whalen was very instrumental in pushing this law, so all police officers in the state of Pennsylvania could carry and give this and have immunity if there was any issue for a, any medical issue related to it. It's also, the law also covers all first responders and EMTs and what have you who are trained in the administration of naloxone. We were so instrumental here in Haverford Township in it that we actually administer the, we're the administrators to the program throughout the county. We log all of the cases where it's given, and the medical director for it is Dr. Dickinson for the county for this particular program. As of this date, there have been 30 deployments by the police departments with 28 people reversed. Two were already in cardiac arrests who are not resuscitated. But outside of that, there were 28 people who were, who were complete overdoses, who were reversed by police. Community CPR, again, we continue to offer this, community CPR. The faster somebody has CPR performed, the greater their chances are of resuscitation, complete resuscitation, to the point where they're actually can leave and have full function and go on with their lives. In our CPR program, the second Monday of every month, we give CPR classes at 7:00 at the Correct Center for free. We ask, if possible, if you'd like to donate towards that, we ask for about $10 a card if possible, but we'll never turn anybody away. We want to make sure that if you would like to learn CPR, that you learn it, and we also offer it to the community if anybody were to have a loved one, particularly an infant that came home on some kind of apnea monitor, or a, or if a loved one has a recently diagnosed heart condition, we'll actually come to you and teach you right there in your home. It's that important that we have CPR certification out there. Automatic external defibrillators, we have them in our vehicles, in all the police vehicles in Haverford Township. Obviously, the medic units have a version, they're not AEDs, we have a full version, but they're all related, and the parts are, to some degree, interchangeable. Throughout the township, people have AEDs, dentist's office, and in some private areas, some businesses, churches, what have you, and we have a program where we will go around and monthly and check on those to check for battery life, for expiration of pads, that sort of thing. We'll watch them, and if there's an issue, we'll assist that entity in, in bringing that unit back online. Sean Patrick's Day, there's a resident here in Haverford Township, Mrs. Monique Doherty. Her husband passed away at the young age, I believe, of 38 from a sudden cardiac death episode. Mrs. Doherty is hosting the third annual Sean Patrick's Day Beef and Beer at St. Dennis' Gym this March 7. I pass that on to Commissioner Heilman and Commissioner Hall. I'm sure anybody would like more information, you'll be able to get it from your sites or contact you, and it's on Facebook as well.
She's raising money.
AEDs, AEDs for anybody who would need it, or any facility that would likely need that. Also in our, kind of in our group of big advancements has been the opening of Penn Presbyterian's Trauma Center. I have a picture of it there. It is a true state-of-the-art trauma center. I don't think anybody's seen anything quite like it. It was seven remarkable resuscitation areas, and this is part of Penn's ongoing commitment to the community, and it's one of the reasons that we joined up with Penn. This is, again, a Presbyterian at 38th Street, 38th Market. It's a little bit closer than Penn was originally, the other Penn, but this is part of an entire resuscitation hospital. It opened on February 4 of 2015. All rescuers had an opportunity to tour it and to be part of the opening ceremonies for it. It includes two portable CAT scanners, I think there's only several of them in the world. They actually do bedside CAT scanners. It's a rather remarkable facility, and it's one of the things that truly draws, drew us to Penn is this kind of commitment, and, and the fact that we can actually bring our patients to a facility that would have that level of resource. So, that's a quick update as to what is going on in Haverford Township and EMS, and as more things come up, I'll keep you posted, but I'll take any immediate questions you have.
Thank you. Chief, I just said, one thing, was there an issue, a temporary issue there with the 12 leads? I understand that they're still doing the 12 leads, but there was there a?
Yeah, what had happened, there's, but there's a couple schools of thought on 12 of the EKGs. It's, you look at a clinical picture, somebody actively having a heart attack, and if they are, we'll transmit the EKG to the receiving hospital. The physician will look at it and say, yep, I agree, they're having an active heart attack. That's called a STEMI, ST elevation myocardial infarction. It's a particular type of, of heart attack. But we've also found, though, and it's kind of showing up through the literature, is clinically, if we can look at somebody, there's signs besides just the EKG that they are having an MI, that would gain them a call to go directly to the cath lab, which is the whole purpose of transmitting it. It's also gotten to the point where most of the facilities we go to, Lankinall and Bryn Mawr, when our medics, who they've known for years, call them and say, hey, I have this gentleman, he has crushing chest pain, it's reading down his arm, we have a line in him, I got oxygen in him, he's pale, he's diaphoretic, we're on our way to you, and I'm seeing ST elevation in three contiguous leads, there's three different views of the heart. Do you really want me to transmit it? And the doctor's like, yeah, don't even bother, just, we'll open up the cath lab, bring him on in. But that's a lot of the established medics, and there's something to be said for having a standard of care throughout the entire region that says, hey, we have this ability, we're going to transmit, particularly when something's a judgment call. And as of today, we actually made the commitment to go back and link phones back to the monitors that we have, and we actually, Rick McClary set us up with the phones today, and we are now currently transmitting again from the two units. So, we will be actually within the next few hours. I know Phillips is online, putting us through to the mainline health, what you call it, site? Server, yeah, server over at Riddle Hospital.
So, when you say with, with the phones, you're talking about cell sites?
Yeah, we actually have to pair the phone to the cardiac monitor, so we actually have to have the phone in the cardiac monitor, and a Bluetooth, it has to be a particular data plan, particular phone, and it transmits to the server at Riddle, which then sends it to either Bryn Mawr, Lankinall, Paoli, whatever hospital we'd be going to, and they would get that EKG on, on fax.
How's that affect areas that, say, have poor cell reception?
We tell the doc, we're not getting a cell, we got a problem.
Really?
And that's actually, I think that plays into the whole philosophy of we should really make sure that every medic is, can look at that EKG and make that call that this is indeed an evolving myocardial infarction, and have the, you know, have the trust of the physicians at the ER that you don't have to hold this in your hand, trust me, he's really having a heart attack. And, and part of that is when you don't have cell coverage. Cell coverage is another issue if we, we're trying to notify an incoming hospital. We have a trauma patient, we have, you know, we have this child in cardiac arrest, we have whatever. You really like to get on the phone, tell them what you have, tell them what you've done so far, and maybe even get a suggestion together as to what they might need bedside. And this is, all goes back to the relation, but if you don't, if you can't hit a cell, it's a problem, obviously. But at that point, we try to go through fireboard and get a radio link, but it's, it can be an issue.
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. President, you know, I just marvel at the way the paramedic program has advanced in the last couple of years, and Jim, I want to congratulate you. I know, Chief, that you've been actively involved, you and your team, Victor included. We are so fortunate to have the level of expertise that we have in this township. We do have an aging population, and I thank God that you guys even live in the township, because I know that you hear calls even when you're home, and if it's close to you, you're there. It's, recently, we had that young child that jumped off the bed and was impaled, and you guys did a great job with that, and we're lucky that we have such, such a great program and you guys running it. So, I really congratulate you guys and Larry, I know you were a part of that early on. It's, we're just so fortunate. So, thank you for everything you, you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And we do have a bunch of quite great rescuers, and I appreciate it, and we actually have a great working relationship with a number of the people in this room and the fire service and whatever. When it comes down to these difficult rescues, and we get to the scene, it's, you know, it is true teamwork. It's the best teamwork I think you'll ever see anywhere. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Appreciate the support.
Thank you. Now, to the, to the agenda, anybody have anything on, anything that's on the agenda for next week?
I just, I wanted to point out that I was adding those three proclamations, the two Eagle Scouts.
Yeah.
And David Welsh as well for the gold medal in the Special Olympics.
He's a good man.
Yes, he is.
Talked about him earlier today.
Just, what's the alarm systems?
The ordinance on the alarm, so what you're talking about, Mr. Demille?
Chapter 45, alarm system.
Lori, here.
Sorry.
P6.
Yeah, could you?
Yeah. What, you got your coat on already?
I know.
Her foot is actually out the door.
One foot is, right. The police department asked to help address an outdated provision in the township's alarm code to remove references to central station. As you know, we no longer have that capability, everything is in the county radio room now, so the township central station offices have been deleted from our code.
Are we changing any of the fines or penalties or other provisions?
Not the fines or penalties. We did update some standards that were consistent with the fire prevention code, I believe.
That was my question, thank you, Commissioner. Exactly what I, what I thought it was, they were changing fines or whatnot.
Anything else?
Some, there's a resolution on the agenda that talks about the inspection fees, the permitting and annual fire inspection fees.
No, you can.
We haven't touched the penalty provisions.
So, Lori, under that 45-2 false alarms, is that just procedure that's, hasn't changed? Is that?
Haven't changed the false alarms.
Let's stay.
And the fee schedule indicates any that are different, right, from the previous fee schedule?
Correct.
They were redlined, yeah.
Right. Any other questions, or? Okay, I will then.
Did, did you want to do something, or were you?
Yeah, we're going to.
Yeah, I just wanted to do it real quick.
End the meeting, then do it, or you want to do it?
I can do it real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, as the, I told the board a few months ago, we were working on trying to make some efforts to improve our social media. This is just, it's still a working tool, but you can see down there on the right-hand corner, we have a little icon there, it says Haverford Township. I put it in the newsletter, and residents who have a smartphone device could access this and load it on. Again, we're still making changes to it, but that's what it looks like. At the top of the screen, we have obviously Township Hall, and if you click on that, you can see that we have our electates there, and easy to access too. So, if we wanted to get ahold of Mrs. Hall, we can just tap on her little envelope there and send her an email, or you can certainly tap on the phone and give her a call. We have same thing with our township departments, and then we actually have, again, a little thing on here with our historical society. We have a shop and dine icon there that residents can go in and see if they're going to do some shopping around the town, if they want to dine in the town. Again, we'll continue to build upon this. You click on that, it comes up where if you want to do breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and so on and so forth. Recreation, under the recreation component, we have two options right now. One is to take a look at all the facilities in town, and then if someone wanted to take a look at one of our parks, for example, if they wanted to go to Bailey Park, it gives them a description of what is at the park, and they can get directions, or click on the map and get them right there. And service providers, again, we're going to continue to work on and build on this. If residents need to get ahold of Aqua, or Pico, or Comcast, the township building is closed, they can access to it. There's an emergency management component that is still, again, a working tool, where there's key information for residents to contact, federal emergency management, weather, Amber Alerts, and there'll be more township emergency management things on there. And there is a mobile site where if you wanted to get to the township webpage, you can get access to that as well. Along the bottom of the screen, I won't go through all of them, obviously, weather, there is the calendar, if you want to report an issue, if you're driving a broken streetlight, you click on the broken streetlight, put the location in, you can take a picture, and it gets to us quickly. So, again, this is just another opportunity for us to improve our social media. We were doing, our police department, the township is doing Twitter and Facebook. I will tell you, it's not easy with the amount of staff that we have, but we're making efforts to do that. So, I just thought it was important that the board.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we are.
Board sees this, and again, we're still making improvements to this.
We are on Facebook and, and Twitter, so we do have both of those going on, if you like to friend us. Yes?
This raises something, and I actually spoke to Mr. Gentile this morning about it. We have an IT staff of two...
I'm sorry, your mic, oh, I'm sorry.
We have an IT staff of two people who do a remarkable job compared with Lower Merion, which has an IT staff of 12. We have things that happen on a daily basis, there's been road closures in my ward because of Aqua construction, and the township's been great about getting Aqua to give me the notices, but it's, it's not, it's not practical or really efficacious for me to be just trying to get that out every day. The, the way lots of people communicate nowadays is through technology, and I would suggest, or that this board consider allocating funds for either a part-time person who would be responsible for our webpage, our social media presence, for possibly maintaining other, you know, related areas of technology, newsletters, whatever, so that we have one person who does this, rather than tying to take a staff which is already stretched and doing as much as it can and trying to overwork them. You know, this is what most municipalities are doing nowadays, you go even to small ones, and I really think it's time that we do this.
Okay. No, no, what, what, I don't want to take anything away from what you're saying, but we, we've already been discussing that, Larry has been looking into, you know, spreading, spreading it out, so we do have a dedicated person posting to Facebook and, and to Twitter, and that, so we, that information is coming in and it's going out when there is water main break in that area. We are working on that, and if we do need a part-time person or something like that, then we'll, we'll do that.
And I'm actually gonna probably look at that as we prepare for next year's budget, and is, it, one of the criticisms that we get a lot of compliments to what, the way we're doing business here in the township, and I don't think I have to explain to this board, as you all know, every year, we look kind of outside the box, but it has become a, a big challenge for us, and then I'm starting to find that we are not doing, we're actually not meeting our expectations when it comes to social media. Our web, our webpage is probably the biggest criticism that we get, because it's not up to date. If you go on there, and you'll probably see everything relating to our emergency medical services is way out, way outdated, as well as the fire companies, it's just trying to find the time, so I think it's something that the board is, and myself and staff are gonna have to take a look at as we move forward to the remainder of 2015, as we go into 2016. We're probably gonna need some additional staff, at least part-time, to be, be able to be dedicated, whether it's one or two days a week, that it will be able to come in and redo and make sure that the webpage is up and it's got appropriate information and address those things, so.
All right. So I'm over. Okay. Good night, gentlemen.